Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Public Utilities Commission for Thursday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is four thirty. Will you begin with the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Do we have any public input? Say none, correspondence? Okay, um, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? Say none. I'll try your minds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Uh, we don't have any new business. Oh, I'm sorry, financials. Sorry about that. Um, financial report.
Um, I'll start off by saying the revenue numbers in front of you did not change from last month. Um, it's because we had a change over with our accounting system, same system, but we had an upgrade. And Paul and I have to sit down and figure out why our reports aren't tying out right. Uh, so those are last month's numbers. Wasn't a billing month. So they wouldn't change much anyway, but I just wanted to point that out that that's the same as last month. Um, just like I know Tom Phil doing at last month's meeting, water's in a deficit position right now. But if you look at the water side, the three of what we spent on capital, it could, the contract that serves capital project, we spent nine hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Um, I think all of that is birth from it, if not all, almost all.
Nearly all.
Um, and we just, we don't have the loan dock yet to get reimbursed for it. So it looks like we're in a deficit position. Technically, we are, but the second we get the loan and we'll get all that revenue back, plus previous year's revenue or expenses that we spent. And then that'll completely go back to that that's in the surplus position similar to sewers. Um, otherwise, we're three months in. When I went through it, everything looked like it was where you'd expect it to be or below where you'd expect it to be three months in. Um, you're always later the first three months because a lot of the bills that you pay in July are really for June. So you're always kind of one month behind when the bills come in. So you should really be at like two months on your first quarter. Uh, cause as you'll see next, you have the invoice that you approved tonight are really September's invoices for the most part, and we'll pay them in October. Um, I didn't see, I don't know if you saw anything else, Tom, I really stuck out this early in the year. Um, it's not like last year when we had, uh, the July fourth issue. Um, so otherwise, I'm happy with where we are. Um, and obviously, I'd love for us to get that loan set up with the state on birth from sooner than later, so we can start accumulating that money. But we have the cash on hand to float it while we can or while we need to.
And they're aware we're waiting. I, I talked to our engineer and he had me send him an email as a reminder so he could then send an email to the financial group, which he did, and that kind of like shook the tree a little bit. So they've got a lot of stuff there dealing with at the same time, but yeah. We're in the queue.
All right.
We haven't made any payments to Danbury, have we?
Uh, for the sewer now. Uh, I think that bill comes out.
They usually figure it out in October.
Yeah.
And they give us the yearly amount, which then we just paid off four times or.
Yeah. Really, what we end up doing is we make three or four payments on it, but it's like November is the change period.
I know, Ray, sorry.
They're playing me off. I talk too much.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a quick question? I just want an understanding of something.
Sure.
Oh, Brad, I just, I just was looking, um, when does the town pay their FICA quarterly? And hospitalization, because on both accounts, sewer and water, nothing's been paid according to the municipality report.
Uh, so FICA, we charge at the end of the year. We do it throughout, and that's usually like on the sheet. Well, it doesn't show on the one you guys get, but it's, um, like, if you look at the, you can't see, but the summary sheet I do shows the allocation of it.
Right.
FICA, hospitalization does get charged throughout the year, though. Um.
Well, I think on the municipality report, it looks like nothing's been charged.
So oh, two, ten, one, it'll be three ninety, a total benefit. So FICA zero, hospitalization in sixty-two thousand. And employee pension, we book at the end of the year, too.
Oh, I read it wrong then. I'm sorry.
Yeah, because hospitalization is every time we pay a bill, we allocate the water and sewer employees their portion on each side. So that one's done, but because FICA gets fully paid by the general fund throughout the year, it's one of our journal entries. So.
Same for the pension?
Same thing for the pension.
Yeah, I kind of figured if the FICA was like that, so was the pension. Yeah, okay. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. So, um, I make a motion. We accept the financial report. You have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? None. Motion carries. So invoices, and I'll just, I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion for discussion that we pay invoices as listed for six hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents. You have a second, please? Okay, discussion. Any thing jumping out, anybody?
What do you think, Tom? Is it all coming together as expected?
Generally, yeah. Um, you know, it's gonna, that the big project's gonna come in kind of bits and spurts sort of. So they're doing a lot of still the submittals. So a lot of the actual work in the ground, maybe not isn't quite there, but it's all progressing.
And we're not over anything yet.
Um, the Green Mountain one, that, that's more or less their last payment. We'll have one, uh, well, we'll have to square away, uh, and, and, and deal with the retainage. But the, the work is complete now by the contractor finally.
Have we had, um, is it, is it Mountain View or what? The, what's it? Mountain, the lake, the dam?
Mountain Pot.
Mountain Pot. Have we had that reviewed yet?
We had that inspected, uh, I forget the date. We kept picking a Monday and it kept pouring like heck, so I pushed it back and we, we did meet. So I'll be getting a report on that. That one is, I think that's called a Class C.
It is.
And it's due every seven years.
Is it seven?
For that one, it's, it's every seven. The other two are Class Bs, I think, and they're due every, like, every two years.
Okay.
So this is this fiscal, um, no, next year we'll have, we'll have to do those two.
Okay. Did we get a bill for that yet? I don't, we're.
No.
Okay. Do we get a bill for that?
We'll, we'll get a bill.
Okay.
When he finishes the report.
Gotcha. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, try your minds. All in favor? Aye. Uh, opposed? No? Okay, let's go. Okay, so let's do the director's report, please.
Okay, uh, my main item this month is just a, uh, discussion on, uh, water rate increases. Uh, I didn't want to put it on air for any decisions. I just wanted to put some information together for the commission's, you know, um, review. And looking to probably make decisions at the next meeting, select the rates that we're, we're, we're looking to do and, and put a schedule together for meetings. So I, I, I put together a narrative, which is really probably more information that you're aware of already, but um, I wanted to summarize things and at least have something that we might use as a, as a handout at, at a public hearing. Um, I, I won't go over any of that in detail. There's a couple of, um, uh, figures, exhibits I can put up on the screen if you want to see them. That, I'm not sure how I.
You gotta make them co-hosts.
I already did.
Should have the screen share.
Screen share.
Um, do you do a comparison to other locales around here?
Yeah, yeah. Exhibit B in that packet, uh, Dino, if you flip. Um, it isn't the most up to date. Ty and Bond does a survey of water rates every two years. So we've gotten them in the past. The twenty nineteen, yeah, I know it's difficult, but I didn't know which ones to pair out, even though a lot of them are not in our area. There's a total of seventy-four. We came in thirty-first, the thirty-first lowest. Um, it's, it's based on fifteen thousand gallons a quarter, and that would be the average annual dollars that, that you would spend.
That's what the, uh, the X axis is.
The X axis would be the, uh, the dollars.
Like four hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, so I think our number was what, four fifty-nine?
Yep, yeah.
And I highlighted Aquarian only because really they're, they're in the town of Bethel as well.
Yeah.
I think they were five, is it twenty-eight? Um, if you have our point. No, no, go to the.
You don't have it open.
I, I didn't open it yet, no.
Oh, yeah, you gotta open it so you can share it.
All right, where, where's, here's my desktop.
This is why we're like foreign.
Here, hold on. There you go.
Now that. One that jumps up the pages, we're four times higher than our neighbor.
Say that again.
Four times higher than our neighbor.
Which neighbor?
Well, yeah, that, that's, I think, their residential rate, believe it or not, they, um, I don't know their rates in great detail, but my understanding is they keep their, that residential rate way low and they, they, they basically are, are getting funded by all the commercial industrial, which of course Bethel, we're, we're generally ninety percent residential. So we're not in the same position to do that.
Sorry. Yeah, and they charge probably four times as much for the year.
You don't want things to figure.
And they charge four times much for the commercial meter, the big meters.
Uh.
Okay.
Okay.
Great doubt.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know their whole rate structure.
Unbelievable.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, that's just one that Ty and Bond does every couple of years. I don't know why they didn't do it in twenty-one, and I don't know why they didn't do it in a card year.
I figured what their rate is for six inch meters, S and L.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why they keep that residential five eighths inch meter line.
That's where you pick it up.
Okay, so I, um, so the packet kind of had that. I also wanted to go through the exhibit A, the page, I think maybe before that, was our past history. I wanted to show that for people's identification. I mean, our last rate increase, we decided to do like in five-year chunks. So the seventeen through twenty-one really had a relatively lower, um, set of rates. Um, they, they, you guys split it. It was three and a half of the minimum charge, three point seven five for the volume metric. But if you look at the five years prior to that, like, uh, twenty twelve through twenty seventeen, you'll see those first three years were thirty-five, a thirty-five, and a twenty. And I think that was just to really make up for the lack of really raising rates in previous years and doing any kind of infrastructure. So I put that in there so, so we, we can, you know, kind of get a look at that. Um, Brad, are you going to be able to look, deal with the, uh, spreadsheet or no?
Well, I don't know. I'll show it, but I, and we can talk about it.
Okay.
Do you want to show it?
Well, we have it. The, the last page, the last page should be that spreadsheet, which may be a little difficult to read because it's all on one page. On, oh, no, it's, it's the, um, it's the, it's the, um, it's the Excel spreadsheet. It's the last page in your guys' packet. It'd be two pages of the budget and then the last page.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so there's, there were, there were one more. My packets didn't happen, so.
Yeah, that's where it ended.
All right, I'll share it, Tom.
Hey, hey, Tom?
Yes?
Uh, just, just a couple of comments, and then I got a question. Um, isn't Danbury, doesn't an outside source handle Stanbury water? Isn't that run by an outside source?
Their, their sewer plant is.
Oh, okay, not the water? All right. And out of curiosity, what, why is Aquarian, why do they call our area of the state the Eastern District? I don't get it.
But it doesn't make any sense to me, but.
Okay, all right. And the last question I have, which is really the heart of the matter, is, um, what do we need to run for the next five years? I mean, you've given us five, four different options, but I'm not so sure.
The spreadsheet party that, that Brad's gonna put up is gonna show it.
So Tom, stop sharing your screen. Jack, if you make me co-host, then I can.
I make you co-host.
Oh, yeah.
Get to the start of share. Oh, my gosh.
All right.
All right. I thought this was in the packet, but I, I apologize for that.
It was, it was. I've got a copy of it.
In the email, but I don't like, no, the name, remember you gave me a handout. I don't know.
You can make that smaller. So pretty much what Tom did is top here is, um, went through, backed out our expenses that we don't anticipate to have like an inflation ride on. Um, so he took out the transfer out, which if you remember during the budget, is what we use to balance the revenue and the expenses. So you take that out, um, you take out the capital projects because theory, we're trying to have Berstrom be the last big thing we're doing for a while. And you take out the debt service, because the debt service is gonna double when Berstrom comes out.
And it's a fixed number every year. It doesn't go up with any percentage, you know, inflation-wise.
So that got to Tom's number for the last two years, um, budgetary. And the year we're working on now, twenty twenty-four, he has one million nine sixty-three, five ninety-one without those expenses. Um, and then for basis of trying to come up with a rate, kind of what, we had a company come in and look at it. They gave us a lot of good information. And then at the end of the day, we said, now that we know all that stuff, instead of paying an outside company to look at this more and more and more, Tom went kind of looked at it and said, all right, if our expenses increase at three percent a year, what does that get us to? And that's where we go from the one nine to the two to the two point one and so on. Right? And three, Tom, Dan and I were talking, might be light, but let's look at what hopefully we're running mean, hopefully inflation chills out. You know, this past year was four something, four, five, but inflation's been crazy. Um, so if we ran it at three percent, what would we need to increase the revenue piece by percentage-wise to get to break even, really? Um, in the short term, and then at some point, we're gonna need to start doing capital items again. Otherwise, we're gonna just end up in the same boat where we have to fix the system all at once. Um, so if you look down here in this option one, we ran an option of increasing rates across the board five percent. Um, year one of really the new rate, it's great, we're one eighty-nine to the good, but then that's where their debt's still being at four eighty. The following year, we're anticipating the loan coming on board for Berstrom. Our debt goes from four eighty to nine hundred and fifty thousand.
It basically doubles.
Yeah. Um, which we knew all along, and knock on wood, all those grants and stuff that Tom has gotten for us. And that's based on us going out and getting an eight million dollar loan and not a twelve million dollar loan like the project actually. Um, if we had to go out and get the whole twelve, you're talking about a six hundred thousand dollar increase instead of four hundred thousand. Um, so this is what happens if we just did five percent across the board. Um, it takes the year five, assuming we stay at three percent increase, we don't do anything else capital until we start getting back to the black, right? Um, so we ran that, we went, all right, five percent in our head doesn't work. You shouldn't take five years to get back to a point of you're doing bare minimum, right? Because I think not doing anything capital improvement-wise, it's probably bare minimum. And not probably super realistic.
And three of those years, you're in the red.
Yeah. Yeah.
So to me, that, to me, that one didn't work, so we need to look at something else.
So then we ran a couple, we ran probably ten options. But we tried to limit it to what kind of made the most sense when we ran the numbers. Um, option two, which I personally feel like it's aggressive, but I think it's what in a best case scenario, we probably do. Um, obviously, that's up to the commission and everything else. Um, it's a ten percent increase year one, seven and a half percent year two, and then we get to the straight fives for the next three. Um, the justification for the big jump is not only Berstrom coming on, because we knew Berstrom was coming on, we didn't do a rate increase the last couple of years. Um, so we're actually, I think twenty twenty-one was the last rate increase.
Yeah. For that, for that year.
Yeah, so because we paused rate increases and stayed flat, now we're doing a little catch-up year one, a little bit more year two, because one of the scenarios we ran was do we do like a twelve and a half year one and then straight fives? But we didn't want to be overly aggressive either.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, I kind of wanted like maybe ten as the.
Yeah.
Not, not, not that it can't be higher than a ten, but that's where I wanted to kind of.
It's a great story.
Um, the one I was most excited about was probably option three because of where we get at the end of the year, year five of like four forty-four to be able to do capital needs again. Um, but I understand that's a thirty-seven and a half increase over the five years. Nothing compared to the two rate increases ago when we did like a thirty-five and twenty-five, twenty-five. But we're also trying to, in a time where people, uh, home taxes went way up. We're trying to balance all that. It's not just, I know not everybody in town is a rate payer for water, but you know, those people, a lot of people took a hit on their real estate taxes. So we're trying to do right by the ratepayers too, while also not messing up water, the system for future years. We hate to do like pump and lighter with this one, and then five years from now, we're sitting here going, well, we really missed the boat and we should have gone way higher. And now your back's doing like twenty-fives. Um, and then option four.
We'll go back a sec.
Oh, yeah.
That option three, I don't think you mentioned was, or did you? Seven and a half a year.
Seven across, seven and a half across the board. So not as big a hit the first year, but year three, four, and five, you're still paying the catch-up fees on it, pretty much.
And, and there's still one year in the red there, that second year.
Yeah. Um, and then option four um, is a ten and then four, seven and a half afterwards. Um, again, that's great for future planning because we're gonna have to replace more pipe. We're gonna, you know? Um, but again, then you get into, is that too aggressive? Honestly, to me, the choice is between two and three. Um, three gives you a little bit more room to make sure you're still making the improvements that we want to be, continue to make. Even though there's nothing major coming down the pipe that we know of. Um, you know, like, we still need to maintain the system we have. So, um, but yeah, so that's where the numbers came out when we ran them. Um, obviously, we're, it's up to the commission, so we could run whatever scenario you want to run. Um, and I think, Tom, I don't know if you said this earlier, but the goal of tonight was to introduce it, give the commission some time to chew on it, and hopefully at the next meeting, be ready to act on it, because Tom laid out the whole schedule for it. Um, based on the commission making a decision at the November meeting, right, Tom?
Yeah, uh, loo- looking at what we did in, in twenty sixteen, it was a PUC meeting to accept the rates and, and forward a board of selection for them to set a public hearing. Then the next board of selectmen meeting, they schedule a public hearing. And you, and then, you know, there's a timeframe in there. You probably want to go at least a month, give or take. And then following the public hearing, it's back to board of selectmen for accepting the rates. Um, so I was kind of looking at, we go too far beyond January, we're into the town budget process. Um, if we can do it at our next PUC meeting, that could get that public hearing scheduled for December prior to Christmas. Um, and then maybe the board of selectmen meeting in January, finalize it. And then if we apply it in that first full, um, billing period in January of twenty-four, we read those meters in April, those bills are not due until June. So people would still have.
Combination water and store, right?
Well, this is just for water right now.
I understand.
Right. Um. And, and one thing I did, Brad, I don't know how easy. You, you have my email from earlier?
Uh, probably.
If you call up that spreadsheet and just, and just flip through to like the last slide, and I don't know how hard that might be for you to get to.
Yeah, I was just making sure I didn't share my email on the, so.
Oh.
Give me a second.
You got it.
I think it's, it's good.
All right, wha- what I did, if, if Brad gets that slide up, I looked at a proposed ten percent increase. If we went that way, that was the highest, you know, that we had in there as options. I was looking at typical bills, and just so you know, from the data that we have, our twenty-fifth percentile Bethel user is right about that six thousand gallons. So really, they're only paying that minimum charge.
Right.
Is this the one that you?
No, that wasn't. It was, it was in the PowerPoint.
Ah, okay. Uh.
So that, um, that six thousand gallon user, that twenty-fifth percentile, twenty-fifth or less, their current bill was forty-two sixty-nine. Their bill would go to forty-six ninety-six with a ten percent increase. All right, there it is there. So I did the, I did the twenty-fifth percentile user is six thousand gallons, current bill forty-two sixty-nine, bill with ten percent increase, forty-six ninety-six, it's a four dollar and twenty-seven cent increase per quarter. So multiply that by four, you're looking at seventeen bucks a year. The fiftieth percentile user is ten thousand five seventy. Their current bill's eighty-three thirteen with a ten percent increase, ninety-one forty-seven. The increase is eight, eight dollars thirty-four cents a quarter, about thirty-three bucks a year. And our seventy-fifth percentile, meaning seventy-five percent, people use that amount or less. Sixteen thousand seven hundred, current bill, one thirty-seven, uh, with a ten percent increase, one fifty-one. The increase per quarter, thirteen eighty, so call it, uh, like fifty-six bucks a year.
And I think the user to bring this up, the, you got our water and sewer users.
Right.
It's not going to be a ten percent increase to that bill.
Uh, sure.
It'll be less than that because the sewer's not changing. But we really still have to look at water independently because at some point, we're gonna Danbury for the sewer plant, and we're gonna have to do a rate study on sewer.
Yeah, the sewer bill will stay the same as it is right now.
How does, how does it affect schools?
It affects the town. The town's one of the bigger users of the water.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, that was one of the things Tom and I talked about, but I think.
Yeah, they're looking at, yeah.
The, even though it affects the general fund, I think PUC has to look at, it affects me on the town side.
Right.
Of how the budget and everything. Um, but the PUC's got to do with the PUCS.
No, I don't have a problem with this, same.
I, I didn't tally up the school. I don't think.
They're all users too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, when you say we have thirty-seven hundred users, we got more than that because the schools use it.
Yeah.
And they're flowing water.
Mm-hmm.
That's part of a use. Everyone's a user of it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna affect town side.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yep.
But the town is getting the benefit of the improved, improvements that we've been putting into the system. Right, right. So it, it's just now time to pay for it.
I, I know all about it.
But, but you're correct, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I mean, how much of a, of a surplus are you comfortable with?
That's the question. Well, the, the other issue is if you look at the different options there.
Well.
It's not so much a surplus to run the department, it's the surplus to be able to do some capital.
Correct.
Correct.
I, we're not gonna bank.
But how much?
The bottom line on that was not going to be banked. It's gonna replace meters. It's gonna do something else that comes along that's gotta get done. Replace a generator, replace, I'm not saying we can't figure out how to replace anything.
Yeah.
But building up capital will then allow us to spend on capital.
That was already in there.
Well, the, the other side too is the water.
No, we, I took the capital out.
Oh, and, oh, and ems.
No, not capital, which you're operating, which is.
Oh, the, yes, O M and A, that's the number I kind of backed into by taking out capital.
But that, but that already has replacing meters.
It does, correct. And all the, yeah, yes, you're, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, but the question is how, how much do we hold in case our capital need comes up? That's, that.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, what are you comfortable?
What I want to show it, listen, one of the things we talked about is that with respect to inflation, we're betting on three percent increase right now. Can you show us what a four would look like? Yeah.
Yeah.
Just in case, because, I mean, I don't know what's happening right now, but you know, the world's a little crazy as we know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And if, if we end up with four percent inflation, which is, I think, really normal, realistic.
The, the, the years that are in the red will still be in the red. There'll be a little bit more in the red, and the balance left over on some of those years are gonna be a little bit less for yours.
Yeah.
But it still works about the same way.
Yeah, so, but again, there, there's a little bit of a better buffer there.
Question, there's a little cushion.
Little cushion.
Yeah.
But, but outside of unexpected things, you take that value every year and it's cumulative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So after four years, you have a million dollars, a million dollars.
If you're at that point, you're six, if, if you don't have to raise your rates, then you don't have to raise your rates. Your expenses will still climb.
The other part of that, um, or not, it's a consideration that if everything runs smoothly, water department ended fiscal year twenty-two, owing the town still six hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
So really, in option two, this is at four percent, it's a five hundred thousand dollar surplus, and water still owes the town a hundred grand without doing any capital. So that's a factor too, but we didn't want to put in fifteen, ten, 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 ten to immediately pay that back. Because it, it's on our balance sheet of like, it's like an asset to us, because water owes it to us. Um, the town has a healthy fund balance that we don't need water to immediately pay us back.
Right.
But at some point, water's gotta get out of that hole completely. And, you know, like, we're not even talking about, this doesn't even really probably put us in a surplus. Best case scenario, it puts one of those, the town, is zero. And then if we don't need any new capital stuff, year six, seven, eight, nine, maybe you start building up a little surplus that start paying for capital items as you go and not having to do twenty-year loans.
And, 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 and there will be pumps that'll have to get replaced, generators, the Maple Well Structure, that building, I think it's like the original structure that, that was built back in the sixties. So there's gonna be a roof, there's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be work that's gonna have to get done. And I, I, you know, the, the, I don't think the goal of this process is to just.
Well, do you have a five-year plan?
Build up a heavy surplus, but it's to have money available for.
Oh, yeah. Do you have a five-year plan?
Uh, yeah, we put together a, a ten-year plan, you know, some time ago, and it, you know, generators, vehicles, which the vehicles we really now have covered, but so I don't see any vehicles coming soon, but.
And, and, and so when you compare that against this, where are you?
I, I, I didn't, um, basically, Dino, I'm just trying to get through initially here, the extra debt service for Berstrom, we're, we're paying for an extra, for, for Berstrom, that's what this project's doing. And then I think, you know, we're gonna have to take a break of a couple of years with any major capital. And then I think we're gonna start spending again.
Like, people was going out on Stone Hill. What amount of buildings going on? Tremendous amount of building, tremendous amount, even though it's quarrying water, we're gonna get to sort. There's a tremendous amount of building.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how many, you should look at now. I mean, you got, you got a four-story now, you got, and it's four.
Yeah, yeah.
You got another four.
And, and they've been moving with the allocations already, yes.
You're gonna have, I mean, look what's going on down here.
Hmm.
You got, you're gonna have two hundred, a few more units over in Diamond Avenue. Right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's all kind, they're talking about two stories and a couple of intensive over there now. They're talking about the corner of Chestnut Street. Plus, you know, that, you know, another four-story apartment over there. I mean, there's a lot of users gonna be used up this year, over the next four or five years.
So, um, so, I mean, th- this is all the background at this point.
No, no, I'm not, not, I'm just saying, you, you, you're gonna have, you're gonna have more work to be done.
Uh-huh.
And, and, and in the future, you can't say, we're gonna have three for two years, it's not gonna happen. You gotta look at the total picture, you're running ahead.
Yeah, I think too, that Tom and I talked for, Tom, Dan, and I, as I said, is as you, as rates go up, people may conserve more.
Yeah.
And if you're bigger users, start conserving more, which is great, but it means less revenues coming.
That's right.
So.
So, so going forward, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how we want to pare down, obviously, this was just presented here in, in the last few days, but we, we need to, for next meeting, kind of have a
No, we're not.
Selected an option.
We're not giving you our, we're just like, I know the total picture.
Right, right, right.
Which is gonna add.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to say now.
Just trying to get feedback on what are your thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Or at next meeting, we, we're, we're back with looking at the four options and we make the decision at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think, once we have.
No, no, and I'm not looking for a decision today, right?
Option one.
There's a lot coming out.
But I, I had to have it in there so you see it. Cause I think that's where we were kind of going, at least that's where I was going from a couple of years ago. At about a five percent increase, but it, it doesn't work.
Yeah. But initially, when you started looking at Berstrom, it was a six million dollar.
Well, so that, that's, that's.
I, I, I think so, Dan, so, well, Dan, it's ten years ago, water and sewer was under Public Safety Commission. It's consistent, Kenny Parsons, Dick Nussell, and the three selectmen, they controlled all budgets. So they, water always made money. Sewer was always in the hole. So what they did when they combined the two, two departments together, they never separated it. They paid, to borrow a computer to pay for Paul. That's why your water went in the hole. Water always made money, sewer never did. I'm talking, this has been years ago.
Yeah, and then when they separated them, they found it was the opposite, sewer's been making money and water hasn't.
That's what happened, yeah, and that's what they found out, but when you split it, they never split the budget.
Yeah.
I did.
Well, what, what I will ask for, for next month.
Yes.
Is, how does this compare to what you anticipate your capital requirements to be in the next few years?
Sure. I'll, I'll. I'll, I'll put something together, for sure. And again, I'm gonna have to be lean, but you want to see some numbers, I get it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Like, like water main, water main replacements, we did for three or four years in a row, about a million dollars in water mains. I don't see us replacing water mains for a few years.
Yeah.
Exactly. So that's coming out, and that, that was a, a big number in the, in the capital planning. And we always had valve replacements and hydro replacements, but we generally don't necessarily have to spend that much on those items, you know? So anyway, yeah, I'll put something together.
Yeah, I mean, cause we need to justify why we want to increase, not just, oh, because the number will get bigger.
I got you.
And just so everybody knows, the way these loans were, we paid the same amount every month for the twenty years. So it's not like when we bond money on the town side, like for the schools, the interest goes down every year. This is more like, uh, your car loan, where the principal goes up and the interest goes down, but you pay the same amount every month. So this nine fifty-seven that we're estimating is gonna be nine fifty-seven at least for fifteen years, and still your retail comes off, and then uh, chestnut comes off, and, you know, but it'll be a twenty-year loan at pretty much four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, we're estimating. So it's not like we have, like, let's pause for a couple of years and the debt will go back down. Because this has all been in the last five years or so, it's staying at that level for at least fifteen.
We still haven't got a bill from Danbury and all that other work, we don't know, we still have that, right?
Yeah.
And we don't even know what the heck that's going to be. That's fair.
And I asked for, I talked to the finance director in Danbury at a conference, thirteen months ago. Oh, yeah, yeah, we gotta sit down and look at that.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
They've been doing that for five years.
Oh, I know.
In the five years that I'm here.
Yeah, I know.
You've been doing what, sitting down?
Yeah, for better or worse, though, I know it stinks from a planning standpoint, I'm not really having good hands on that.
Right.
But we also haven't been paying for the last three years while they've been.
Oh, no.
They've been constructing for at least eighteen months now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
More than that, I think.
Yeah. So.
Alright, I make a motion to accept the, uh, director's report. Second, all in favor?
Alright.
I oppose my motion carries. Uh, PUC Capital Project Status Summary.
Okay, I, I mentioned the sewer project already, contractor's pretty much done, we need Metro North to come out one more time and replace the railroad tie that was taken out. Then we'll be in a position to close out the contract, figure out the retainage we owe back to the contractor and put that done. Um, Berstrom, okay, so in the last month, the sixteen-inch water main, the HDPE pipe, has all been, mostly all been fused from the street all the way to the back of the property, close to the building. Um, they've got it backfilled from the street to about maybe two-thirds of the way up the soccer field. They paused it at that point, they're now getting close to where you go through the gate, and then you go through where it bottlenecks, and they've got a culvert crossing to do at that time. I think they're trying to figure out how and when they're gonna do all of that. And so I think that's when the rest of the water main will get backfilled. They got a serious water issue they're gonna have to deal with, because the water's really not getting out of the site, it's, it's wet. So they're, I don't know how they're gonna do it yet at this point, but that's something they gotta deal with. Um, they're doing a bunch of, um, the piping that's gonna go under the footings. They're getting all that put in now, um, so that that could get tested, it's encased, and then they'll be able to do the footings. So that's, hopefully, we'll be talking concrete work at the, at the next meeting, but, you know, we'll see. Um, the backwash source and backwash recycle tanks are, are partially backfilled at this point. Um, and site de-watering is going on, and, and they're doing a good job with that, the, the pump in the back by the footings is, is keeping up, so, um, I think once they can get all this pipe in in the next couple of weeks and get things formed up, they should be able to get concrete footings poured and then at least get the site back up, you know, close to grade. Um, that's it.
I mean, you know where all the joints are, Mark, they're getting all vision.
Oh, yeah.
A tracer in there, Joe?
Tracer wire, yes.
Tracer wire, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Where's the tracer, tracer attached to the hydro pipe, the metal pipe?
Uh.
They've got it, they've got it, it's, it's attached right at the hydro where changed the plastic, you know, some little. Well, it's, it's attached right to the, um, uh, the twelve-by-sixteen increaser.
Right.
And they get the same thing to sewer line, they attach that right in the middle.
Yeah, yeah, that's where here, yeah, that's where here they can read it.
Yeah.
And then we can follow it all the way up to that kind of thing. I think they've got like five or six different points along the way that they can actually clip on to this tracer wire.
Okay. Okay.
So. Alright, that's it.
Now, given that's a summary, I don't think we have to accept that, it's not a port, right? So how about we do the utility supervision report?
Uh, we have forty, uh, forty-three MIUs and this lady has orders out of Vegas, one fifteen backbone inspections, including countless leg scale, I shouldn't say countless, but a whole bunch of leg inspections. We had one sewer backup on the right way in Hudson uh, during the night, uh, at that, uh, cleared out. Uh, compared to services, uh, first, one of them was a day after they paid Brookwood. But that's the way it usually happens, one way or the other. Uh, Fall Street on that heavy rain we had on the Fridays, we were maxed out at twelve, at two million gallons. We were pumping twenty-five hundred gallons a minute for pretty much the whole day. It's an incredible amount of water that we've got that one particular day. Um, I think plum trees went underwater at some, at one point. Uh, but they handled it, everything went fine, uh, and we started reading them soon. I remember that.
It did, so. That was interesting.